I'd like to call the Wednesday meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education together. Please notice that all members are present. I have been asked by our secretary, who, Executive Secretary, who is a person of whom I fear, to consider going ahead and making the calendar decision now because so many other people are based their calendars on our calendar. And I've been advised by our attorney that the best way to do that is to actually have a motion to amend the agenda to include that item. If that, if there's a motion and a second for the amendment, then we will vote on that. And if it passes, then we will vote to approve the agenda as amended. And I would suggest that that item be number 3A and would be considered immediately after the approval of the agenda. Gene?
I have a second.
Okay, is there a second? Betty seconds it. Ben, you get to make the motion. Okay, all in favor of the amendment? And this is adding, this is the add, the action on the changing of the November date. Please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as amended. Deana and Gene? All in favor? All opposed? Ben?
Do we need to suspend the rules?
Temporarily suspend the rules.
Okay. 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 I move that we temporarily suspend the rules and do everything that Mark Ferguson said.
Is there a second to that? I hate to give blanket to Mark. It's, you never want to do card.
It was past tense said, not what he's going to say.
You never want to give carte blanche to lawyers. You know? Deana, is that a second? All in favor? Oh, now you may make the motion.
And then I move that we move the November 2022 meeting to the afternoon of November 9th, is that correct? I don't have my calendar in front of me. Uh, November 9th. And all day November 10th. So it'll be Wednesday afternoon and all day Thursday.
Is there a second to that motion? Melanie seconds that motion. 9th and 10th. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I've asked Craig to talk about remote learning. And the legislative liaison people have threatened me for giving you some of their time, so please take less than an hour.
In that timeframe. Peggy's given you some information, two pieces of information. One is the actual language from the bill dealing with remote learning, which is House Bill 2134. It's quite a few pages, the full bill, so we just pulled out the section that deals with remote learning. And then you're also going to receive the slides that are about to be up in front of you, which is a shortened version that I think hits most of the high points. So the legislature passed House Bill 2134. That was the bill that contained most of the items that dealt with education, including our funding. One of them was remote learning. And it defined remote learning, just to back up a little bit. Prior to last year, I don't know that we ever even used the term remote learning, much less had it take place. But with the pandemic and students and parents who felt safer staying home, that became a common way to educate students. So to help clarify the difference between remote learning and virtual schools, they included this definition in the bill. And to try and be clear, the legislature is fine with virtual schools. If students and parents are not comfortable attending school this year, the option that would be available would still be virtual schools, to attend virtually. But remote learning, as it's described here, and the main issues are regularly enrolled in the district, they do not physically attend the attendance center. Last year, that typically meant they learned from home on a full-time basis. Curriculum and instruction prepared, provided, and supervised by the teachers and staff of the school district. Some virtual schools are done that way, but not all, by any means. But in remote learning, that's the way it always happened. The teachers of the school district, and in some cases, schools had so many students they hired additional staff, but it was their teachers providing the curriculum of the school district. And the intention was to approximate the learning experience that takes place in the classroom. Again, some virtual schools, that happens, but not all. Some provided a totally different curriculum and a different experience. But remote learning, as we experienced it last year, is what they were trying to define. So given that definition, school districts may not provide more than 40 hours to any student. And that's just flatly stated in the bill. There are exceptions. The local board can exempt a student due to illness, medical condition, injury, or extraordinary circumstance. So the student that needs to have surgery or is in an accident and has a broken leg and will need to stay home for three weeks, the local board can grant an exemption so that the school can provide remote learning if that's the best way for that student to be taught for more than 40 hours. And I might back up. The 40 hours was picked because that's more or less a week for most school districts. And the intention was that allows the school district to provide remote learning to their students if they choose to. If you have a snowstorm that lasts for several days, if you have a gas leak and have to close your building, those types of issues that occur from time to time. They didn't want to rule that out as possibly a better way to provide education than just sending homework home, for instance. So that is an option in those types of situations. That's why the 40 hours was allowed in there. The exemption was for those situations that typically happen. Since the virus has flared up again, obviously, if a student tests positive for COVID, that's an illness, a medical condition. If they have to stay home, the board could, the local board can exempt that student from the 40-hour count. And you can provide remote learning if that's the best option for that student for as long as they are quarantined at home. Which brings up the next question we're getting from school districts. Craig tests positive for COVID, so he's staying at home, he's got an illness, we can exempt him. How about seven of Craig's classmates that now have to be quarantined because they were close contacts? We believe that falls under extraordinary circumstance and that the board could also exempt those students that had to be quarantined. Yes, sir?
I got a call yesterday from a parent that had an 11-year-old child that had a serious heart condition that, and had numerous surgeries and had been even Boston General. And believed that if the child contracted, and probably legitimately believed that if the child contracted COVID, it would probably be fatal. Can that child then be exempted and taught at home all year?
In my opinion, yes, under the medical condition exemption. The intention.
Does the school have to do it?
No. Well, back up. That depends, and I'll just jump ahead, on the three letters at the bottom of this slide. If the child has an IEP that says that's the least restrictive environment, staying home, then yes, the school has to do it. But barring that, you do not have to, just because the student needs to be at home doesn't mean you have to provide what's defined as remote learning. There may be another method that works best. We used to have homebound instruction, still do. We're trying not to use that term too much because that has some special connotations in the world of special education about specifically what's going to happen. That does not always involve a teacher making contact, remote learning does. So, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. In the event of students being exempted from the 40 hours, the local district is required to notify the state board that these students have been exempted. Because the, another question we get is, okay, how does the board exempt them? They have to specifically exempt them, it's our understanding, with a motion in a board meeting. Now, because of the circumstances, you're not going to name that student. You're not going to have your public motion say Craig is exempted because he has COVID. So the local board is probably going to do it by reference to a list or on the consent agenda. But there will be a list maintained and the district must notify the state board of who those students were that were exempted. Any questions about that piece of it? Okay, the state board also has a role to play. You may authorize up to 240 hours of remote learning due to a disaster that might occur in the district. So think tornado, flood, those kinds of issues that would close a building for a long term. If they cannot reasonably make up that time, the district may apply to you for permission to provide remote learning for an extended period of time. And that is specifically, in the handout that has the full wording, that is just below the middle of the first page, letter D, if you want to read specifically what it says about your role in that.
Questions? Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple. The first question is, I was contacted by the individual who was not comfortable sending their children back to school full-time, and they wanted them to go remote. And I replied that they would have to go virtual. Is that correct, or could they, because they're just not, they're just not comfortable with it?
Right. That is correct. Unless they meet one of those exemptions listed there, then the option is to attend virtual school.
Okay. And my second question is this, last year, when I was with Randy, when we were visiting schools, they were trying to open everything back up, several districts commented, well, maybe now, on snow days, we could have remote. Can we do that?
Yes. And that is partially the purpose of the 40 hours that's allowed. So if, as a district, you choose to provide remote learning during snow days, during gas leaks, during whatever the case might be, that your building has to close, that is allowable as long as you don't pass 40 hours.
Thank you. This is, excuse me, this is kind of general question because my concern is that the public and obviously a number of school boards have no idea how this is structured. The feedback I've received is that the state board is the one that denied remote learning. And so there's a great deal of misinformation out there. So my concern is, is it the responsibility of the legislature to make sure the public is aware of what was done and the procedure that they are to follow? How is this information disseminated to the public so they understand what the procedures are?
Part of this is opinion. Part of it is, I'll tell you what we did. Opinion notifying the public probably happens best the closer you are to them. What we did during our budget workshops this summer, as well as during the Zooms that we have, used to be weekly, now monthly with superintendents, we shared this PowerPoint that you're seeing, those slides, as well as other information. So to make superintendents aware of it. Yesterday, or Monday, I don't remember which day, we sent the exact language from the bill to superintendents as well, so they would have that. So we've shared it with all of the school districts. I'm not sure, again, I think it's best shared with the public then by the local school district because they can better describe what it means in their district.
So is there a mapped-out procedure that a parent would follow where they would know, do I set up a meeting with the local board? Do I go through the superintendent? How do I initiate any of this? I mean, it's kind of like telling a person who's unfamiliar with the computer, open your browser.
Yeah, good point. We will provide for school districts a specific form that they can use to notify the state board, so they'll know how that piece of it works. For parents, and I can't speak for a local school district, but I believe most districts are going to want them to start with their, the principal in their building, like you would with any other issue or concern that has to do with attendance. Because when it finally comes down to it, that's what we're talking about, is attendance in the school.
And final question. And so typically, when the school board makes, local boards make a decision regarding a student, if that parent disagrees, there is an appeal process. Is anything set up where if the local board, as an extreme example, say, well, no, where that parent can appeal that, or is that the final setting?
I don't know of anything in the bill that allows an appeal process.
Okay. My hand raising thing apparently is not working, so if you have questions, you'll have to let Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Craig, if they did use.
Craig, if they did use a snow day as a remote day, don't they have to deliver meals on that day? Isn't there a requirement about that?
There is a requirement to deliver meals unless the weather is so bad that the district determines it's not safe to do that.
Oh, okay.
Then they're allowed not to.
I have, in your visits with the superintendents, has this come up about, I mean, I know almost all of them that I know of made some arrangements to have a virtual option available this year, even if they hadn't in the past, because nobody wants to do remote. I don't know a single teacher wants to do remote again. And I don't know any districts who really want their teachers to have to deal with all that because we run into the problems we talked about yesterday, you know? But are the superintendents, I mean, are they getting concerned about that? Or is the virtual option look like it's going to work for them?
I don't want to speak for them, but I think, like you said, most of them made arrangements, if they didn't have it already, to have a virtual option specifically for that reason. So they, they evidently believe that it will work for them.
So if the parent said, yeah, I'm just not comfortable, then, okay, here's your virtual option.
Yes.
That's what we've got. Okay, good. Thank you.
Brad?
Since virtual's on our team, we have had quite an increase. And because you can't just start a virtual option, you have to apply, you have to provide assurances.
Yeah.
So we had quite a few districts went through that process last year. But in addition, some of our service centers changed the way they do virtual for their member districts. And many of them worked with school districts to say, you know, you sign the assurances that your teachers or your counselors will provide supports during the week, and then we will provide the instruction during the week. So they, they made a lot of changes to their virtual programs based on what they learned from remote learning.
Yeah.
The positives. So there, so there was a lot of work over the last year in the event that we needed.
Right.
So I think many of them are in place for that.
Good, well, I remember they-
Probably not all, but a lot more than the year prior.
Remember, they all had to sign up by some date in February, and I kept pushing. I go, even if you don't know, go sign up so you have that option because you don't want to be stuck with no option for kids, so. And I know Green Bush went with a new vendor, Florida, something, I can't think of what it was. But there, but the school district can still provide their own counselors? To go along with the virtual, is that what you're saying?
Yep. So Green Bush, for example, hired content-specific teachers. So instead of a student being assigned one teacher for five contents, the student's going to get someone licensed to teach each content. And then the school district signed an assurance that they would provide the counseling, all the services that they do locally. They will continue that as part of the agreement to do it because we learned in remote, the more the student can stay connected with their peers, their local counselors, social workers. And, and Green Bush, for example, is providing the content.
And if they do that, they get what, five thousand a kid now? Is that what virtual-
Well, it'll still be counted as a, the kid will be counted as virtual.
Right.
Not as a brick and mortar.
Gotcha.
And that's on the next slide.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, just a quick clarification. So where's the, it's my understanding that the school districts are not going, like, in a quarantine or isolation incident where they, they, you've tested positive or have been near someone. Do they still have to prove and have that seventy-two-hour hearing through the Department of Health to, to quarantine you at your house? Since the districts aren't going to be dealing with that, the Department of Health will be.
Yes, sir.
You used to have that seventy-two-hour hearing and they had to provide you with that to prove that you can't bring your kid back to school and, and be educated, that you have to stay home and, and learn remote or whatever it is you have to do.
I'm not aware that that requirement is still there.
Okay. And are the, as far as the, like, the CASIA rules, are they on, on, on virtual? Are they able to, to, with sports and stuff within, within the district? Since you're, like, insider, like with Spring Hill, they're able to be within that district? Are they able to participate in sports?
Somebody here may know the CASIA regulations better than I do, but I believe you had to be enrolled at least one class, brick and mortar, to be eligible. That may be different now, I don't know.
I wonder if that rule changes.
No, where?
Not anymore?
I don't, I don't know that, so.
Oh, okay.
So how would we, how do we need to find that out to get that out to the public in case they ask that question?
CASIA would have to provide that to the school districts.
I got a message yesterday from CASIA about, I haven't read it. Okay.
I'm sure they're a lot like school districts were. They didn't think they'd be back in this position again this year, so they may be reexamining. Just finally, one of the issues that, that legislators deal with is, so we passed a law and says you can't do this, what happens if you do? So they included if, for some reason, a student would exceed forty hours without an exemption, they are no longer considered and funded as a brick and mortar student. They're funded as a remote learner, which is five thousand dollars. That's the same amount as a full-time virtual student is funded at. There is no part-time funding for virtual students. So if a student would be part-time, I'm sorry, no part-time funding for remote learning students. There is for virtual. So if a student would be part-time remote and part-time brick and mortar, they're funded for the part-time that's brick and mortar, and no funding is provided for the part-time that's remote. So if a student would exceed, and just for clarification, part-time remote is, another term for that was hybrid. So there will be very few, if any, hybrid students this year, and that was the intention. We specifically asked about that, they did not want to allow hybrid learning. And then, as I mentioned earlier, an IEP is federal law and that prevails. So if the student's IEP says the least restrictive environment is home or this other learning setting that's outside of school and providing remote learning is the best way to do it, that will be allowed and they will not be penalized on the funding.
I see no further questions, and you've answered the question, you've answered. Jean?
I just had a question. This bill has a lot of, state board shall do this determination or waive that. But can you just briefly explain how the department's managing, going to manage the, those requests and, and how we will interact with them?
The request for the two hundred and forty hours?
Well, it appears so, or the, learning in excess of the forty-hour limitation. There's a lot of requests for the state board to do various things.
So the, let me go back up one. Informing the state board that the, of the students that have been exempted, we'll have a form that districts will be able to complete and send in to us so that you can be notified, this many students were exempted in Oskaloosa, wherever the district might be. So that will take place by way of a form that will be turned in to us. The two hundred and forty hours exemption will have to come as a request from the local board to the state board. We've had this event that's occurred, we can't use our facilities for an extended period of time. Here's the reason and why we cannot reasonably make up that time. So they would make a, a specific request to the state board as an individual district. The other thing that's mentioned in there is those students that do exceed forty hours and don't have an exemption, if there are any, that would need to be funded at five thousand dollars, the districts report that to us in June. We have a, another report called the Local Effort Form that already comes in in June that contains information about virtual students, for instance. That will be added to that report so that they can report it to us and we will adjust funding at that time.
And so those requests will come to us for approval?
There, those are not really approval, those are just telling the state board and us, these students exceeded forty hours. We have to adjust their funding, and then because it's June, the following year, when the auditors go out, we will audit those numbers to ensure that that is what really happened.
So the department will be taking those actions where it says the state board shall notify or the state board shall determine that type of thing?
Yes, with the exception of the two hundred and forty hours, the state board has to approve that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I will turn the floor over to our legislative liaisons to discuss our legislative, proposed legislative agenda. I want to thank them for putting together a draft that we will now be discussing. So Nina, Ben?
The handout should be in your folder. It's toward the back, I think, right, Peggy?
We did include a statement at the beginning. And if you feel that something else ought to be included there, certainly would like your input on that. One thing I noticed, the first sentence talks about our constitutional authority. And one of the other things that we mentioned later is licensure of educators. And I think maybe we ought to include that. So that first statement would say, the Kansas State Board of Education has the constitutional authority for general supervision of public schools, which includes setting course standards, determining high, high school graduation requirements, and licensure of educators, pre, of pre-K through twelve educators. So, and then, another thing that I'd like to do is, in that last statement, some way, if we could, it bothers me that we keep saying support, support, supports as we read through this. So if you'll grant us technical changes, we can, I think, fix it. So it says that the state board supports, and then we just use bullet points instead of always saying supports. And if anyone, if no one has specific things at the moment they'd like to add to the statement, we'll start moving on through the, the actual priorities that we've identified.
Let me just make an observation. You know, we, we sort of fight with the legislature every year over what their responsibility is and what our responsibility is. I think tone is important. I, I don't object to anything that's said here, but I would like to lead. I, I think it would be to our advantage to lead with the statement about wanting to cooperate with the legislature.
Okay.
So that the first thing they don't, the first thing they don't see is kind of rubbing it in your face, this is our, I agree with everything that's there. But I think that if the audience is the legislature and we want to continually reach out for cooperation, that it might be to our advantage to lead with that statement and reinforce it.
So instead of leading with constitutional authority, you would like for us to take the second sentence and move it to the first sentence?
Well, yeah.
And I think we could also-
I'd like to lead with cooperation, you know?
And we could also, I think, say there that we appreciate the fact that they've made efforts to meet the, the Supreme Court's agreement as well, so.
Anything that we say positive will be to our long-term advantage, in my opinion.
So Jim, are you suggesting they just move that one sentence, says it's our desire to work in concert? Maybe make that the opening sentence?
Yes, and, let's see.
Which?
It's the third sentence.
The third sentence?
It's our desire to work in concert with the legislature.
That, so-
And I would take out, rather than in opposition.
Take, take both of those and move them to the first.
I, if I were doing it, and I'm not, so, but I would just simply want to lead with, it is our desire to work in concert with the legislature to improve and, and even take out the word rather than in opposition. I would, I would try to be as positive as possible to start. And that's, I mean, that's a picky little issue, but I think, I think tone's important.
Okay.
And by the way, everybody else is in this, not, not just me, so Jean?
Certainly.
On that, I, I agree that leading with that third sentence would be helpful and taking out rather than in opposition. Also, in the sentence before that one, I would take out before developing legislation and just putting the period after the word education because that, it eliminates the negative, and I know that's really what we would like them to do. But I, I hate to cause an affront right at the outset of this.
We have that, Dan.
Anybody else have opinions on that, anybody in agreement?
Okay.
This is your guys' statement. We just gave you a draft.
Well, and, and I appreciate that because if we didn't have a draft, we'd be, weren't smithing and we'd be here until Friday.
I know.
And some people may want to go home before that. Yeah, but I, but I just, you know, in my, you guys have been a lot more successful as legislative liaison than I was. But I always found leading with positives was better, even though it regularly did not.
Well, it's always good to compliment before you say anything else. Are we ready to move on to the specific areas? Okay, academic support efforts.
I want to add, if you've noticed, this is a big picture item. As you recall, last year, the last couple of years have been just a long series. And meeting with our, our educational partners, some of them in the room, we are looking at drafting these and how our board priorities are in terms of accreditation and everything else. So as you notice, we talk about academic, socially emotional, health and safety, those things. And so they're organized in that way. So it wasn't just a long list of random things just compiled together. They were, they're capsulized, but they also reflect some of the board goals and the goals of KSDE for messaging beyond just these. But also when we deal with legislature, say, hey, what are these? These are priorities from the state board to our school. So it's a big change in the way that they're organized compared to the last previous years. And that, I have to give credit to some of our partners on that deal.
Well, and it also, from my point of view, when I looked at it, it was, things were all over the place, so to speak. There wasn't much organization. So one of the things that we tried to do was to do, as, as Ben said, pull out specific things and categorize these areas. So the first one, we, it was suggested that we kind of rewrite that sentence that we had about supporting the things that the Legislative Task Force on Dyslexia had already said, because much of it we had already put in place. said, because much of it we had already put in place. And really, the item that's missing is providing the funding for the dyslexia focus position at KSDE. So it was suggested we just period say that. And so we did change that sentence a little bit. Any comments regarding that? Michelle?
The dyslexic coordinator position, I was, when we, when we met last month, I thought that came out of general fund. Correct? Is that correct, the coordinator position? Is that correct? Brad, does that come out?
Go ahead.
And then you just want the legislator to continue to fund that, or is that what we're?
It came out of general fund or COVID.
Like Brad, do you want to address what she's asking?
So the Dyslexia Task Force, over the last few years, recommended that the state appropriate to us general fund dollars to fund that position.
But they haven't yet.
They have not yet.
And it hasn't been specifically appropriated yet, so.
So when that, that person gets, that has been posted, that position, if they get hired, it'll come out of reserves then, or will it come out of like the ESER funds, funding right now, or how?
Right now, we, we have some vacancies that we're going to try and cover that.
Okay.
But we would like to ask for it, because then we could fill other ones that are currently vacant.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
The Dyslexia Task Force made numerous recommendations, some of them to us, and then several funding recommendations to the legislature. Every recommendation made to us has been done, even though we don't have a coordinator, we've had other people take over those responsibilities. So we have those, zero funding recommendations have been funded. However, through ESER funds, we are now doing the training, like the letters training from yesterday, that we talked about yesterday. So we're actually, through ESER funding, covering the things we've asked the legislature to do. However, when that's gone, we'll still need additional funding from the legislature for those, for those purposes, and that's the Dyslexia Task Force request, specifically requesting. And it was unanimous, and the person that made the motion for the dyslexia coordinator to be funded is the current president of the Senate. So we have that sort of support at that level.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions or comments about the first statement? Okay, moving on. Supports the goal of moving the first 15 post-secondary credit hours tuition-free during high And that's been something that even some legislators would like to see. Funding has maybe been an issue there, but at any rate, we, Ben and I thought that was an important goal for us to work toward.
Well, and it does fit well with the, with our, you know, plans, individual plans of study. It helps facilitate that. I think that's something, even though I don't think that's on the goals now, the board of regents, it was in the past, it's still something that I think, that appeals to a lot of legislatures.
And then, did you have something you added?
Well, it came from, it came from Bert. We also talked to CAC and Jim, I'll be able to talk about this, but there was a request for the authority to use funding to provide an extra year of services to sped kids, to increase the age to, what is it, 23, temporarily, just to address COVID learning loss for sped kid, or 22, sorry, it's 21 now, to extend another year to cover the ages of 22. Again, it's all COVID-related, because we have sped kids in that transitional age range that did not get services or did not get.
I've been told the schools have the authority to do that on their COVID.
Do they have? That, that came from Bert at, in the sped.
Oh, yeah, it wouldn't be funded.
They have authority to do it, it wouldn't be funded.
They can provide the service, they just can't refund it.
So it was, it was authorizing funds to be used. It kind of goes in both the funding and the academic, I like to put in the academic because it's more academic-based, in terms of just authorizing the money to be used to, and that came as a request from CAC, and their messages to us. So if there isn't, it's not typed on there, but if it's, has a consensus to add it on there, we will.
I could see had it written on there, so.
Yeah.
I was giving him a chance to say what, what it was he had in mind. But again, that would most likely be a funding, an issue when we get to funding.
I think it's an authorization more than it is additional funding. It's just not the reason to use funds, because can they use funds for 22?
It would, it would increase the numbers of students.
Okay.
Not that it's not important, because we do want our, all of our students to be successful, as successful as they possibly can be. So from my point of view, that's particularly when COVID has made a kind of a, an issue for us to deal with there, that for, that could be an exception for, for the school districts or the co-ops, whoever monitors the special ed in any district to, to deal, allow them to deal with it and to make certain their students are ready to, to go out into the world.
Procedural issues.
Janet?
Since I can't see people and you can, we won't go through, and my hand-holding thing is not working, just call on people as they raise their hand.
We will. They're all outspoken individuals, anyway.
But does Janet?
Thank you. My question is this, if we do not get the legislative approval, then the special ed could not have the funding for that, is that correct? Or they could not use the, the special ed funding for it if it's not approved by the legislature? Or can they do it without approval by the legislature and fund it, and use, okay. I want to make sure they, they don't get, they don't have to cut into their own budgets, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Without additional funding, they would be cutting into their own budget.
Okay.
There will, there will be, there are one question to ask, since the reason this is necessary is COVID-related, could the legislature probably use ESER funds to fund it?
Could they use that, they could use that with the ESER funds, for example?
That's my opinion. The task force would have to review that.
Well, I believe this is extremely important, because from everything I've heard from everyone, our special ed kids have suffered the most for, through COVID. They've lost the most, and it's going to be harder to catch them up. So therefore, I support whatever needs to be done, so, thank you.
Well, at least we can make sure if we have that statement, we can say we believe that that should be authorized. Brad?
I just emailed Bert. When we know that over 80% of students with IEPs graduate in four years, I'm just going to try and get an estimate of how many go to 21, so we kind of get an idea, because I don't think it's going to be a considerable number that would then need to also go on to, so I'll try to get that estimate.
Okay. That would be excellent information. Did I see a hand on this side? Michelle?
Yes, thank you, Deana. I'm just going back to the, to the, moving toward the first 15 post-secondary credit hours. Is, is that something we're doing right now? Are you, are we talking about concurrent enrollment where, like, you get those credit hours towards, you're kind of working with community colleges and we're getting, they're taking them in high school and they're, they're getting credit hours for certain classes if they qualify. A lot of times they have to be tested in. Is that what we're talking about, or is it more for CTE, or?
It, it would be the, the first 15, the general credit hours is generally what we were looking at. So we look like English comp, college algebra, those courses, and it's to have the state cover the cost of taking those courses. Because right now, it depends district to district, whether the district, some districts pay for it, some districts the parents pay all of it, some districts it's subsidized by an agreement, I mean, it's the.
To keep it balanced throughout the state.
Statewide, this is.
Parents do pay for, parents do pay for quite a bit of that, and certain districts pick up.
Parents most likely pay for it.
There was authority last year granted to school districts to cover the cost of some of that as well.
CTE is covered under the old Senate Bill 155, and the, the regents get the money and they pay for that. What we were after was the other kids who are going gen ed, you know, other academic pursuits, not CTE, that, from all the, and this, we developed a bill with the board of regents three years ago to ask for the first 15 to be paid for, those first, like, English 1 and 2, whatever, college algebra, whatever, we had five classes we were targeting, that we knew if we could get that done in high school, kids would have a better chance to finish. We had worked out a deal with the community colleges about how much, you know, compensation they would receive, and we took the bill to the legislature and it got through the Senate, but not the House. So it's really kind of reviving an idea that we had before, and even if we couldn't get 15, you know, if we could get them to start with something like 3 or 6, it would mean a whole lot to those first-generation kids who, or kids who never thought they'd ever go to college. And it's so unfair that, like in Johnson County, it may be 100 bucks an hour, but great for kids whose parents have 100 bucks an hour to spend, but we have a whole lot of kids throughout the state who don't have that opportunity. So we wanted to make it equal for all kids, that the first 15 would be provided, assuming you could pass, you know, your ACT scores or whatever it would take, but that the first 15 would be provided free statewide. And I, and it would be, I mean, I can't even imagine how great that would be for the economy and, you know, attracting businesses, you know, all that too, but I really, I really like trying to dredge this thing back up and, and get it moving again. And I know in our Advantage Kansas Committee, they're talking about, one of the jumpstart team is working on, you know, how do we get more dual-credit hours in high school, and they really like the idea of helping to pay for some of them, too.
And one of the, I remember when we were first talking about this also, that it was seen as a way of getting first-generation students more confident that they could participate in a, on a college level. And because we need a much larger pool of individuals who are capable of fulfilling some positions, so it's another way of saying, hey, you, you can do this, even though many do not believe that they can, because their families have never, ever been college graduates. So there's many reasons for reaching out into that arena.
Based on consensus, do you support the academic standards, which would be including the Dyslexia Task Force, the 15 hours, and the ad, asking for the additional year of special education? Is there, we're not going to do motions, but as a consensus, do you agree with that or not?
I just, I just need to get more information on that, because I, there's a lot of, those, some of those courses are weed-up, weed-up, I mean, there's a reason that they're, they have to be, there's certain competency, so I would say, maybe we look to, look towards a competency, because, just because we're paying for our taxpayers or whoever's paying for that, you still have to be able to do the work, and you still have to, you still have to put forth effort.
You do have to meet certain grade expectations and so on.
The requirements for these courses will still be there. It's giving access, it's not requiring every kid to go through it either, and I don't think that's the intention of it, is that every kid will have it, but it's offering that to those students that, that's the path they're going to go down.
That otherwise qualifies.
A lot of those are at community colleges, a lot of those courses are at community colleges, and it's a lot lesser, it's less expensive to go on to a university, big university, and try to take those courses. So a lot of people go to their local community colleges and go through that, which is, it's less.
The plan for this is for all the community colleges, is my understanding. Let's move on.
Okay, moving on to social and emotional issues. Support the ongoing work and recommendations of the School Mental Health Advisory Council, including but not limited to bullying prevention and efforts for suicide prevention and awareness. And we kind of combined a couple of, of statements. There was a separate one for bullying and, and suicide, so, suicide prevention. So we combined those because the Mental Health Advisory Council had been the last group to, to touch upon that particular area. And it was suggested by, by our partners to add but not limited to. So that's a little different from what our last draft said, but doesn't change the meaning, just adds the potential of something else.
Since the legislature also has been interested in all sorts of abuse and neglect prevention, should that also be listed under, not limited to? Should that be added? Because that, that does come up every session. You know, sexual abuse, child abuse, neglect, so maybe that should, so I'm, I'm just saying, include but not limit, bullying prevention, efforts, suicide prevention, abuse and neglect.
So we, for the most part, with the, the addition, what did you say?
Abuse and neglect.
Okay.
Came from Jim.
Wondering about adding another item, because the legislature didn't increase the funding for mental health pilot, and maybe this is a funding thing, but I think we ought to ask them to increase the funding for the mental health pilot, so more schools can participate, because we know how successful that's been.
We did with the funding vote. So also taking consideration, last month, we also took a vote on budget recommendations, and that was, we did vote on that last month to increase that funding. So all the stuff that we voted on last month, it's not listed here, but that is also part of those.
But we know that that's included.
Well, so is some of this other stuff.
But we can make it, make a specific statement that includes all those things.
Yeah, you could put it under funding, I think, or under social-emotional, but funding probably makes more sense.
You get that now.
Yep.
Make it, social-emotional, it just depends on how it's applied and how we're, how we're dealing with it. I'm not a big fan of SCL at all, never have been, so it depends on how it's applied and what vetted programs we're using, and if they're coming, money's coming from the federal government, government to fund it, or if it's a local community involvement. I'm all for local community involvement and knowing what's, what's out there, what's available to people, giving them the resources, helping within our community, private partnerships, if it's coming in, SCL coming in from the federal government, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a fan of that.
Well, Michelle, this isn't about services, this is about our mental health advisory team dealing with the issues the legislature keeps bringing up.
And I, and I understand that, as far as, with, 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 with the bullying and the, and suicide prevention, it depends on how it's applied to the, to each individual student. There's, there's ways.
Right.
When you're talking about. on how it's applied to each individual student. There's ways, when you're talking about, when you're talking about suicide prevention and counseling in the schools and group thing, there are different ways that families want to handle that.
Right, but we've already dealt with that. All this is, is about that when the legislature has a problem, come to us and our mental health advisory team will try to figure out how to deal with it, not actually provide services.
Okay.
Like we already had a, you know, the Bullying Task Force came up with recommendations, and we said, rather than you guys write a bill on bullying, let us deal with it. And that's all I think this is about.
So it's just keeping it, as an educational piece, keeping it with the Kansas State Board of Education.
Right.
Keeping us and keeping everything in our lane, in our lane.
In our lane, okay.
That's what we're trying to do with this. Let's move on.
And generally, if particularly if this is delivered in some way through the school district itself, the legislature really kind of delegates that responsibility kind of to the state board. But even if they don't, I've never ever seen the legislature not be concerned about community involvement and parental involvement, so on. So I think that's something that normally is included in things like that. So the intent is to be helpful, not being, putting yourself where maybe you don't belong, so to speak.
So everybody in agreement on the social-emotional stuff?
Health and safety issues.
Health and safety issues. I think we can cruise through some of these. These are the flavor ban and the 21 tobacco. Discussing yesterday, the stop arm is back on there because they have yet to do anything about it. And then it's supporting human trafficking work for the Attorney General's Office, the opioid, and the juvenile justice. And I skipped over the vision. The vision is added, it was a bill that came up last year after talking with John Harding, Superintendent at School for the Blind. This was something that needs updating big time. It's adding a, what is it, a vision screening advisory board, or it's updating vision screening across the state. It hasn't been updated in a long time. Did you have something, Betty?
Actually, I have a question because, and it's asking more for directions. We had discussed an item, and it could fall under health and safety, it could fall under funding. So you might direct me when to ask that question, which was on transportation. And we had talked about adding that to our agenda. So which, how would I, how would I go about doing that? Do I wait for funding, or is that something that we-
I would say the transportation piece would fall more under funding because it's a funding issue.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think funding is where it would be.
So with that list, a lot of those things for your guys' benefit are all committees that we sit on as boards. I know we have, we affectionately call it the drug lady. I think it's you, isn't it, Deana?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'm the drug lady.
Yeah, in terms of that. And so they're just committees, and we support their work. We partner with them. So that's generally where that list comes from.
And with the exception of the vision screening, I believe it all was on the list last year as well, so.
Okay, going on to funding issues, it's a lot of the stuff that we voted on last month. It's doing the Supreme Court level, base state aid, supporting public funds going to public schools, that statement, moving to the funding of the 92% excess cost for SPED, which we voted on and approved last month. It's coordination investment in CTE programs, including the CTE transportation, again, voted on last month, and early childhood and kindergarten readiness, which again, we voted on with a budget recommendation last month. In terms of that, there were a couple other things that have come up that I know we have talked about and put under here from SPED. And I need more clarifications from Bert, and we will talk more with Bert on this. But there was, Sammy, you said about a tuition waiver for those that are doing, for SPED teachers, in exchange for a certain length of service that they must do in order to get it. It's to get those, a lot of the SPED jobs require a master's degree, and it's covering that extra little bit. But I have not had a chance to talk with Bert more, and I don't know if, Jim, if you know more on it, because it came from CAC.
Yes, there's, it's not necessarily a master's degree, it's the hours that, to a degree. But yes, it's about that many. And yes, support's very much needed to encourage, because there's, of the shortage that is in the special education area. So this is, this would be a huge assistance and incentive for people to move forward that they don't have to pay.
So that came from CAC. And if you recall from our presentation, I think, or is it this, that's from earlier this year, talking about teacher shortage, about half of them come from SPED. As you recall, as I recall from our meeting, about half the vacancies in the state of Kansas teaching, it come from SPED. So that's a big issue. One that the chair has brought up is state salaries as well.
Yeah, I have a conflict. I'm conflicted here, because I've just talked about staying in our lane. I'm also conflicted with, the fact is if we have, at some point, I think we need, not today, today we need to do exactly what we're doing, I think, but at some point, I think we need to prioritize our list. Because if we have four or five issues that we're really pushing, we may be able, it's sort of like, you know, if I'm given a list of 20 things to do, just a list, that's going to be overwhelming, and I'm probably not going to get anything done. But if I'm given a list of 20 things to do and say, these three are the most important, then I'm going to prioritize those three and get them done. So I'm concerned about if we just present 30 things to the legislature, that's going to damage our focus. And I may not even be making sense, which wouldn't be the first time. But that's sort of, you know, I, everything we've talked about is important, but are some more important than others? And are we deluding our message by adding too much? I mean, I don't know the answer to that. I'm just bringing that up.
Yeah, I was just bringing it up.
I think you might be right. I mean, we, a long list like this is helpful for these guys, so they don't have to come back every time and say, what's your will on this issue? But in terms of what we actually send to the legislature, it ought to be a short list. And this will be the backup for you. We all need to agree on all this stuff, but then just send to the legislature the things we really, really want.
I'm just bringing it up because it was brought up to me.
Well, and I think when you're dealing with salaries of the state employees, there are classifications for people, and it doesn't matter where you work, what department you work in, if you have, if you're in that classification, you receive the renumeration. So it wouldn't be just our employees. It would encompass everyone, unless we made some sort of a, unless the legislature made some sort of an exception.
I feel strongly that we need to value people that work for us, absolutely, and let them know that we value them. Whether or not that's our place to influence salaries for all state employees, even though I'm the one that brought it up, I'm not sure that we can say to the legislature, you stay in your lane whenever we jump out of ours. That's, again, I'm one person in this group, same vote as everybody else.
Betty?
Okay, I guess this is where I jump in. It's several things associated with the comments that I'm about to make. One of the things that came up in a local board meeting I attended in Derby was that since under the pandemic, I guess, all students get to eat free or whatever. And so we have, there was elementary students that had to walk to school in the dark in order to be there for breakfast, which was a huge concern. No sidewalks, no having to cross four lanes of traffic to get to school to eat breakfast. And the concern was because students were falling less than the 2.5 miles, they had to walk in order to do this. One of the parents brought up, it was a third grader that is walking in the dark, which is a huge concern. So again, I bring back the issue of transportation. And the 2.5, I've been particularly concerned as it has to do with the elementary students being out at that hour. Also associated with that, I understand that legislature has a cap set on the transportation. So that would also be a part of what I'm asking us to look at. I don't know, at the Derby School Board meeting, they do not have hazardous route set up, transportation, because clearly the kid that's walking across four lanes of traffic would qualify, or no sidewalks would qualify. So I, is this the area then that I would make the request? We did discuss that at a board meeting, that this could be included in our priorities. Is this where I would make that suggestion?
This is where it would need to go.
Then do I just simply say, are we going to add transportation? Or is there a certain format I need to say this in, because this is huge for me?
It's feedback from the board.
Well, and I do know that there's always been a concern of how this would affect a rural district because of the funding.
That's why I mentioned the cap.
Because there's generally a pot, and it's distributed, if I remember correctly. And I had even thought, and I talked in fact to Craig this morning about exceptions, making exceptions for, specifically for children that are having to cross busy highways, no sidewalks, that sort of thing. And then you get into who's going to monitor that and how, how many people will start saying, me too, and so on and so forth. So that's, that is always a concern.
I appreciate what you're saying, but I don't believe that we have the right to sacrifice students because it might impact on the transportation for the rural district. I was asking for us to look at that in combination, look at the cap, see what can be requested on that, but also understand that there are students within the urban area that require our attention as well. And when you have a third grader or second grader that's walking in areas where there's no sidewalk, having to cross four lanes of traffic, and I am told that if they walked an extra six blocks, there's a traffic control signal. There are some factors that warrant our consideration, and it was discussed at last month, I believe, that we would add transportation to the priority. So I am asking that we do that.
Would a request wording be appropriate to where, if we lower the mileage reimbursement, lower from 2.5, that we suspend the cap for that one year to adjust that increase? And so rural districts aren't financially at a loss because there's less money to go around?
And that's why I said, why don't we make exceptions for students that have this, that live in the areas such as you're describing? Because I too think we don't, we cannot sacrifice their life simply because we've got a funding idea that maybe doesn't accommodate that. So I'm looking for solutions that do not impede upon somebody else's funding that they need from a rural area. So we don't have a rural versus urban issue, that we focus on kids and the fact that they need to get to school safely. And that's, that's what I'd like to see. In fact, that was on the list, and we decided maybe we shouldn't have it on here.
I think with the wording of, if mileage is lowered, the cap needs to be suspended for a year to accommodate that extra. The other thing that came up as a request from partners is removing Fort Leavenworth from the capital improvement formula. It's for bond and interest state aid. That came from partners as well. I know it's not typed on there, but that was one that was added.
The fact is that whether you live in a rural area or an urban area, two and a half miles is too long for a kid to walk to school.
Yeah, I think the rural areas would like that. I mean, I-
Walking in a ditch.
Well, in Shawnee Heights, we bus every kid. I mean, it's a rural district. There's no safe place, even if you live a block away, to walk, because you're going to be in the road with the buses. So we bus every kid at our own expense because it's just a smart thing to do. So I think even rural school districts would appreciate having that mileage lowered.
So-
And we did the same thing. We, as long as, if we brought in buses full in the area where I was, we'd start at 3:00 in the morning. So we had, so buses did not come in full because we still started at 6:30. And so we picked up kids as long as there was room in the bus, and if it was a block from school, that's what happened. So, you know, a lot of schools are doing it anyway. I don't see it as a conflict. But I do believe that it's, it needs to be addressed.
So would you all like to see a statement about transportation?
Yes.
Okay. And it may be, find a solution, we need to find a solution to this issue with transportation.
The last thing is on capital improvement. There's a formula, and it's all prorated, and it's a request from some of our educational partners to team with, to support them in a statement saying, remove Fort Leavenworth School District, because again, they don't have a lot of taxable property, because the state formula, in terms of matching for bond and interest, is based off of that. And every year, that, Fort Leavenworth's not getting much richer because it's all federal property, and then it's just supporting them to remove Fort Leavenworth through a bond and interest formula. Is there any objections to add in that? Yeah? Yeah.
Yeah, once again, once again, at some point, we need to prioritize this down, because we're putting a lot of stuff on here.
Yep, that's the end of my list, so. Gene?
And I just wanted to go back to the transportation issue. I agree that it probably should be lowered, if possible, but I also believe that this is a district responsibility. Districts are capable right now of picking up any students that they choose to pick up. They're also capable of adjusting start times for schools so that students are not walking in the dark. So I think this is something districts share responsibility for, because even if we lower it to a half a mile, there's still going to be students walking in the dark in dangerous situations. I think districts need to take some responsibility for ensuring their students are safe.
Any, everybody okay with the funding? A lot of it's stuff that we voted on last month anyway, so.
Anything additional?
Let's move on.
Okay. Meeting student needs on the other, on the backside. It's talking about public private partnerships with business. We added with business to clarify and et cetera. It could be organizations also for the purpose of meeting student needs. So it didn't look like we were supporting private schools. And supports funding, finding, in other words, funding of private schools. Then the second one is finding a solution for the liability issues for workplace learning opportunities for students. And the third one requiring the State Board of Education, well, we already have to monitor the success of the foster child report card that was passed last year. So we want the legislature to join us in any of the requirements to monitor that's the success of that post, of that report card. Are we okay with all of those? Anything to be added? Okay, moving on to changes to curricular standards and high school graduation requirements, including other governance concerns. The support, the constitutional authority given to the State Board to determine statewide curricular standards and to determine high school graduation requirements. And then we have a statement that asks that instead of infringing on those responsibilities that the legislature seek to work with the State Board of Education. And for their information, we talked about computer science and financial literacy have been addressed within the confines of the school day and a committee is studying the current graduation requirements.
This is similar to my first statement about tone. And so I'm uncomfortable with instead of infringing on those responsibilities. I think that's just tone issue. I mean, I think the message is clear that we want our responsibility and we want to, we want cooperation. That it's the tone of that statement that I think may not be in our best interest.
So you'd like the word cooperation?
I would like infringing that part of it taken out. I mean, that's what it is, but I think tone is important. And I don't want to dominate this, folks. If you have an opinion, say it.
And I just had a question about what confines of the school day. I'm not sure that is real clear. I think you could just, that they've been addressed and a committee is studying current graduation requirements. And I like Jim's change too.
Personally, I would just eliminate everything after the first sentence. I think the first sentence says it all and we don't need any of the rest of it.
So you'd like for us to delete everything other than the sentence, the first sentence?
I think that's adequate to express our concerns about that.
I think that's pretty much what we had in the, well, last year. And we saw both computers, well, we saw financial literacy and the civics be placed on, in bills, the legislature. So perhaps we can reword some of that so it doesn't sound quite as, as.
Strike.
As negative.
Yeah, I, while I appreciate where Jane is coming from, I really do. I think that we have to explicitly call out computer science, financial literacy and civics because we can't have folks thinking that we're not teaching civics.
I mean, civics is already there.
It's part of our standards. Yeah. And maybe this isn't, obviously you don't want to try to include all of the standards in the document, right? But we know that these are, I think that it's important to address the issues that came up last session and the issues that may come back this session.
If you want to include those, could you put determine statewide curricular standards to include but not limited to computer science, financial literacy?
Absolutely.
So it's, it's all in one sentence?
That is a good comparison.
As an example?
Anything else on first bullet point?
Okay, the second bullet point has to do with the Kansas State Act School, High School Activities Association, also known as CAESIA. And we have a little bit of oversight over some of the CAESIA rules and policies. So we're just asking that they work with us in regard of those before they take action by writing bills and so forth.
Once again, tone is important.
Yeah.
So what about putting the period after the word association?
I just did that. Based on the conversation we were having, I was about ready to suggest that.
And then the third bullet, the responsibility of the State Board to license, and it should say pre-K through 12 educators and ask again that they work with the.
I think we'll cut that section. We'll just put a period after educators.
Right.
Okay.
Based on the feedback from you guys, so.
Okay. Because we've said that already, at least once or twice.
We can't hear you, Anne.
I'm sorry, does that mean we need to change to the title of that section? I mean, are we really talking about changes? Are we talking about?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We're really talking about who's in charge?
Yep. Well, Polly just, I'll suggest maybe just curricular standards, high school graduation requirements and teacher licensure. Would that work?
Or you could just call it governance issues.
Governance, okay.
I mean, we don't want to list out every darn thing they might want to stick their notes in.
If we would just say that it was governance, period.
Yep.
Or that we say it, State Board of Ed, governance.
Just say governance.
Well, I know it's shorter, but it also tells them who's governance.
Okay, you guys come up with that and let's move on. Disaster issues.
So with disaster statutes that include flexibility when responding to natural disasters, including the, in other words, being able to adjust statutes to include more flexibility when responding to natural disasters.
Which is directly related to the first thing that we asked Craig to talk about today. I think we need more flexibility. I think schools need more flexibility.
And then supporting the work of the S R Task Force and we'll put in the correct total name, the Commissioners Task Force on S R Funding or I'm not sure exactly what, we didn't know exactly what it was when we wrote it. But anyway, we'll seek that exact term out as, because the legislature has attempted to take control of, of some of the funding that was supposed to go to school districts and they could use for COVID reasons. They wanted to redirect it for some of their funding ideas.
You know, I know they tried to do that, but I think we pretty well shut them down. And if they didn't get the message last session, I mean, I don't think we need to put it in their face again. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think we have that authority and I don't know that we need to say that.
Yeah, I think.
We've taken.
Except there's, that was S R two and there's S R three now.
I know, but the same rules apply. The feds gave us the authority. If they try to dittle in it, we'll send them another letter reminding them they can't dittle in it.
I agree.
Yeah, that's kind of like rubbing it in their face.
Yeah.
I agree with that. Put that down, I agree with Anne publicly.
And I agree.
So eliminate that second bullet point.
So in other words, you'd like to just remove that? Okay.
Janet and I are on that committee. We'll just continue to do what we're supposed to do.
Out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So maybe they won't remember there's an S R three.
Well, they will, but we'll still deal with it. Local authority.
And then, right, local authority or support of them to select curriculum.
Do we want to limit the curriculum? I think that we need to just support, support the authority of local boards of education.
Right. Period after that.
Is Mark Thomas still back there?
Yep.
What do you think?
Sure.
That's the shortest statement I've ever heard you give, Mark.
Call Ripley, believe it or not.
Didn't come with including or.
Yep, so.
Well, they have a lot of areas they ought to have control over, like whether or not kids mask and all that stuff. So and we could, it could be a very long list if you wanted to go down that road.
I think it was inserted to address the civics conversation because the civics bill was aimed toward curriculum more than it was anything else.
Right, but they've diddled in local board authority in a lot of areas.
Yeah, in terms of that. So anyway, any additions to that one? If not, I think, first of all, thank you. And Mr. Chair, we kept it at an hour.
Well, I want to, I want to say that, I want to thank you and thank the board for this. We have now a long list that's unmanageable. And so now, and for what we need, we've got what we need for this purpose. Now, we need to have another agenda item next month to prioritize so we can, so we can say, these are the things that are most important because you can't spend your time on 30 things. You've got to spend your time on, I mean, I mean, if I were going to do it, the stop arm thing to me is critical, something like that. But that's just me. We need to identify those things that are most important so that you, so we're all not deflecting our time to do 30 things.
Mr. Chair, I think first step is next month, we need to approve this list. And I, I don't know that we need to whittle this list because these, the legislation comes up and provide testimony on these issues and you know how that works over there. And this helps us know when, when we need to opine and when not to opine.
You have what you need for tomorrow when you meet with other legislators.
Yes, we do.
Well, and it's something we can say, the State Board supports this. And it gives, there are so many times that we really were saying, the State Board hasn't taken this up, this information or this idea up. And so we don't know where all the members stand. So we had to testify neutral. And this would give us an opportunity to testify in favor of or in opposition of.
And that's another subject. I think at some point, we need to discuss whether or not we should testify neutral at all. And that's, that's, that's a discussion for another time.
Janet.
I just wanted to, just to ask, I think I know the answer, but I want you to respond to this. I'm assuming this is fluid, that you will be back to us when the legislature convenes and maybe something we haven't even thought of will come up and you will come get our opinion.
If we have that kind of turnaround, because time wise, things come up in a week's time and we only meet twice a month. So we'll, we'll keep you informed, but as far as being able to say, do you support or oppose this, we may not be able to specifically say that without a vote.
I would like to know that if something came up that's pretty crucial, that we could call a special board meeting if necessary.
This, once it's voted on next month as, as an action item, this is a living document, as I'm understanding from the chair, this is a living document that we can remove and or add as needed.
And we, during the legislative session, we have a legislate on every agenda. We can adjust this at any time, Anne. To the extent possible, and I understand there are time constraints, to the extent possible, we need to take action.
We, we're just developing it today and.
Again, I want to thank you for your efforts. I thank for the board for their patience and we will reconvene at 10:45.
And we thank all of you. And we thank all of you.
This conversation is the result of a request for future agenda items with National Council on Teacher Quality. Information about that, and we have Michelle Miller and Dr. Ginsburg from KU presenting to us today. So welcome, Michelle. And as I said, we don't usually see you on Wednesdays, but this is an exception. And so we look forward to this presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Porter, members of the board, Deputy Commissioner New and Swander. We are excited to be here today to prevent, to present to you some information from the National Council on Teacher Quality. And I'm going to share the stage this morning with Dr. Ginsburg, Dean of the School of Education and Human Sciences at the University of Kansas. Today, I got the right university. My apologies for yesterday's misstep on introductions. So I'll provide you some background information and then let Dr. Ginsburg go into some deeper detail, and of course, stand for questions at the end of the presentation. So the National Council on Teacher Quality, on their website, they promote themselves as a not-for-profit research policy organization. Their intention is to help states' district teacher preparation programs ensure teacher quality. Founded in 2000, they use a self-created grading system to assign a letter grade to each university teacher preparation program across our nation. The data that they collect is publicly available. They work to round up course syllabi, course information, et cetera. As a sidebar, I have heard from candidates on school grounds at preparation programs that will tell me, strangely enough, they get these requests just out of the blue to provide a course syllabus to this person or that person. The data requests are made from two state agencies, testing companies, universities. And their determining factor, what they're looking for is pass rates, number of attempts, and best attempt data. These requests, as you all are well aware, are made each year and usually several times throughout the year. Recently, we filled a request. However, that request was filled on a previous assessment for our elementary candidates. We no longer use that particular assessment, but the data they collected was necessary. Depending on the year range of data they wanted, that was on our older assessment. So most recent data you have received is not on our current assessment for elementary candidates particularly. They create their own in-house standards, rubrics, programs, information for these states. They review the standards. They, they tend to look at program diversity, clinical practice, et cetera. And they, again, create their own in-house rubrics and assign letter grades for each particular standard that they are looking at. And these analytics on those assessments and data gathering opportunities are performed in-house as well. Again, as I said, the data or input is several different kinds of things. The requests are made each year. And at this time, because this affects most fully our university preparation programs, I've asked Dr. Ginsburg to speak to you all today and ask and answer any questions that you all may have. I'll turn it over to him.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Let me start by saying I appreciate all your service. It's been a hard year for everyone, but I don't know how many times you all have been pat on the back for the work you've done, and probably the opposite, I would guess. So thank you for, for all of us in the state of Kansas. I, I do want to comment that I did contact the other Regent's Deans and shared the information that I'll be talking about with you. So I'm, I'm not really just talking for Rick or KU. I'm talking on behalf of the other Regent's Deans. NCTQ is a group that started off somewhat controversially. They've been around a while now. I want you to know that my ratings at KU are really high. They may be the highest in the state. I don't know that. But it's not like I'm coming here with a bone to pick because of that, although the irony from us is on the ratings we get from them. The one area that we're weakest on, they, they gave us an A plus and wanted to give us an award, which we found rather, rather strange. I actually was asked by them last year to serve on a, an advisory committee about a, not about the rating scheme, but about another system that they were, something that they wanted to look at about the use of content tests. And I did do that as an advisory capacity. And years ago, I served as a consultant to the National Academy of Sciences, the National Academy of Education, that was reviewing rating systems like that. So I've had some chance to, to, to look in some depth at what it is that they do, and we'll share some information about that if it's okay. As Michelle stated, they, they use input variables and not outcome variables. There's some controversy in that. And in, and it is what they do, and I'll get at that each year. Again, they do make requests of us each year, as well as of the state. You might not categorize what they do as research, but for those of us at the university, data collection processes like this, we would consider research. And one of the, one of the canons of research is you allow people to voluntarily participate, not force them. And they go into a forcing kind of thing. They typically, if you don't submit information that they request, then again, it's syllabi, and it's, it's course catalogs and things like that, that much of it they can get off websites, sometimes they can't. They file lawsuits, free information, lawsuits to universities all over the country to get this, which makes it a non-voluntary kind of thing. And sometimes there'll be gaps I submit in what they get and what they don't get. The biggest concern that I would have for you, I really wish, and I said this to them both directly and behind the scenes and publicly, that if they spent more time validating their standards and rubrics, rather than just applying them the way they do, I think they would have a better quality product. There was an assessment done by faculty members on the behest of the state of North Carolina, probably a body like yours, although I don't know that, to look at NCTQ's key standards and to try to determine if they were, were identifying the schools that, the graduates of schools that made a difference in their classrooms. Here are their findings. With our data analyses, we do not find strong relationships between the performance of teacher prep program graduates and NCTQ's overall ratings, or just meeting NCTQ's standards. The lead author said, "If teacher prep programs focus attention and resources on meeting standards to raise their ratings, the reference should pay off in terms of better teachers and more demonstrated student learning. Meeting many of NCTQ's standards does not appear to lead to higher performing teachers." That is part of the reason that universities around the country, many of us were skeptical, and this became controversial. I did an analysis years ago, looking at their state policy rankings. They also rank states and give ratings on that. And what I did is I looked at NAEP scores and the states that they rated highest and the states they rated lowest. And for the most part, there was an inverse relationship. States they rated highest weren't doing very well on NAEP. The states they rated lowest, sometimes really high. We were rated kind of in the middle on a NAEP we do pretty, pretty well compared to the states in the country. In a, in addition to that, and this is perhaps the most severe criticism that I think me and my colleagues would have, is that they rely on input variables, and these things aren't particularly nuanced. So for example, they look at ACT scores as one of their selectivity criteria. And ACT is getting pretty controversial. KU is dropping the ACT as a requirement to get in. And indeed, they're dropping ACT scores. They're going to GPA as the basis for student scholarships going forward. I'm almost certain K-State will do that, and my guess is all the other universities in this state and this region will do that as well. Many states have. University of Chicago, for example, dropped that. The entire state of California dropped that. This remains a standard. And perhaps they'll change with, with this. Another example, this was the bugaboo that I had, and some of my colleagues had it as well. They, you know, we assign cooperating teachers to work with our candidates. So one of the things that NCTQ requires is that we select those individuals. No district in this state will allow us to do that. We are told to come up the criteria, and the superintendent or the HR office selects it based on, on their needs, as well as, and their availability as well as ours. Now, we go and train them, and we say, here's the qualities that we want. All of us get marked down in this state on their clinical, teaching part of their criteria, because we don't do what we're not allowed to do, and frankly, wouldn't do anyway. I would never tell a state that I have to, a district, this is who I have to have. That's not my role to do that, nor would I want them to do that to me. Similarly to that, they require a minimum of four visits by, by the clinical supervisor, who's hired by the university to the cooperating teacher and the student, that we, we pay. I don't know what's magic about the number four, but from my perspective, it's not the number of visits that you make, it's the quality of the visits that you make. And as an example, at KU, we require what we call practicum, which is student teaching the fall semester, which is eight weeks. And then we require 16 weeks of student teaching the second semester, with two visits in the fall and three visits in the spring across this 20 some odd weeks. We got a C plus in our ranking by clinical supervision, because they said we didn't do four, four visits. And I said, we did five. Yeah, but you didn't do it in one semester. Okay. That's the frustration that you'll find that my university colleagues have. One of my colleague deans said they were very frustrated because they provide, they got marked down in the classroom management standard. And I don't know what the specific criterion was, but below that, because they weren't, didn't do classroom management the way that they, they set it up that you should, and they went back and explained that, look, we require a whole classroom management course prior to student teaching. And then they go in, they said, no, it has to be during the student teaching experience. And so they get marked down for that. Now, I, I wasn't a part of that conversation, but that's, it's that kind of rigidity. One of the bigger problems that we have is, is we don't think the data collection, collection is robust, because they never include input of our faculty, input of our students, input of our graduates, or input of our employers, much like our accreditation system does here. I likened it to, and I use this tongue-in-cheek later on, it's kind of like judging the restaurant by reading the menu. So they look at syllabi, and they'll look at what we put on, on websites. And I'm not going to tell you that everything there is in a pearl of wizardry. to tell you that everything there is in a pearl of wisdom and golden, but you really find out about a program by talking to people that are involved in the program, the faculty. You talk to the students, you talk to our graduates, you talk to our employers. When we had our accreditation visit, even though it was online this past spring semester, we had multiple people that we chose randomly from the districts that we worked with that were on several Zoom conversations with them, and we're not a part of those conversations. We're out. And they get an earful there. From our perspective, hopefully, it was positive, we did really well in our review. They do the same thing with students, they do the same thing with faculty, et cetera, et cetera. You're not getting that in this kind of review. So, it's less robust than what we all require on accreditation. Again, in summary, input variables, it's not terribly robust, and again, judging the quality of a restaurant by reading the menu. Our state, I think we're lucky. We partner with an accrediting agency, CAPE, Council for, I don't remember what CAPE all stands for. There are eight standards. You can see them here. The data collection that goes on for this is incredibly robust and time-consuming. We report every year. One of the standards is quality assurance system and continuous improvement. Every single year, we have to report back to them and display on our dashboards, on our websites, data on all of these things and what we're doing to improve with those data. So, what our accreditation agency has done over the course of the years is force us or those of us who in the past weren't constantly looking at data and making adjustments based on that data. That is the most significant criterion that our creditor, I think, has set up. Others of these are somewhat similar to what our colleagues at NCTQ are doing. Again, we report yearly our standards. These are on the standards. Here they are. I want you to just take a look at those briefly. Again, the key one I would have suggest to you is probably the fourth and the fifth, where we focus on program impact and on quality assurance. Some states don't make available standardized test data. Our state doesn't because of privacy concerns. And we could argue whether that's a good idea or a bad idea, but in lieu of that, what each of the institutions is asked to do is go directly to districts and get data from them or to set up research studies where we will have our students teach lessons, will collect pre-data on how the students are performing on the topic, and then have to report on the outcomes of our student teachers in their classrooms. Really, really robust stuff. It has to have high levels of validity and reliability, otherwise our creditor won't accept it. There's a whole book that explains how you get to high levels of validity and reliability on it. Point I'm trying to get at is that the institutions in this state put a lot of time and energy and resources into looking at themselves and collecting data and reporting back to our creditor and to anybody in the public that wants to see those data, how we're doing on these, all of these standards, which are, again, are a little bit broader than the ones that NCTQ uses. Again, we get reviewed every seven years. Our state as a partner state means that Michelle's office and people associated with her office and others do the curriculum review. That's a part of our accreditation. There are a number of committees that review that. It's made up by K-12 teachers, academics, and people from the community, which is also true of the review teams on all of our accreditation visits. It's, they have to get trained to do it. The training is intense. Again, it's rather robust and gives us better data and better outcomes than, I think, the kind of cursory kinds of things that I think NCTQ does. I'll close with that, and I can answer more questions about our accreditation. Part of the mandate of our creditors is that they review their standards every year, and they look at all the reviews and make sure that the reviews by the accreditation teams are capturing the idea of program impact and continuous improvement that I mentioned. And again, that's a group that works in conjunction with the states that are partnered with our creditor. So, with that, let me stop and see what questions that you have, might have from Michelle.
Okay, thank you. And the hand-waving thing apparently is working now. I'll report that to the board. What is the funding source for National Teacher Quality?
Yep. We didn't put this in the slides, but I'm going to say it. There are self-anointed National Center for Teacher Quality. They, the founder is a very sharp woman who had some ideas about some things that she wanted to do, and she got outside funding from foundations. So, it's foundation support.
Okay, thank you. And?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I was trying to, and I don't know why this is, but I was trying to look at the NCTQ data on my laptop, and it comes scrambled or blocked because of KSDE. So, if we're really interested in it, we might have that unblocked so we can really look at what they're doing. But if we don't like what they do, which is fine, how do we measure whether or not we're producing quality teachers?
Well, I would say that's what the accreditation system is all about, and we can choose to accredit or not accredit institutions based on the outcomes. And after their reviews, you get areas for improvement, what we call AFIs. And so, institutions that are struggling in certain areas get an opportunity to make improvements. If they're, when the review is done, if there are too many areas for improvement or there's something that's even more egregious than that, accreditation can be pulled away.
You're talking about the accreditation of the universities?
Right, with the teacher preparation programs, yes.
And who accredits that? Is that the?
That's the state. The state does that in partnership with this national professional creditor called CAPE.
Well, I remember seeing, like, we had Newman come through to reapprove their teacher prep program, but I didn't realize that was an accreditation.
Yes, yes. That's the piece I wanted to try to clarify today. So, currently, our teacher prep programs in Kansas are accredited by a national organization and also the state, Dr. Katherine Schmiedling's work. It's a partnership. They, our state accreditation follows that national accreditation status as well. I believe all of our Board of Regents schools choose both. Some of our smaller universities choose one or the other and not both. One particular university that you've seen just recently had several areas for improvement, and I know there were some concerns about that. There were no stipulations. So, the areas for improvement are issues that that particular university addresses over the course of the next year. You've asked for a report, and we'll report that back to you. Had there been stipulations, that's the house is on fire. And so, that's a moment in time that really needs to be addressed. NCTQ is not an accrediting body. They are simply trying to determine teacher quality based on teacher preparation. Dr. Watson and I have talked multiple times about the fact that those are newbies. Those educators, when they're finished at KU, K-State, wherever, are new to the profession. Our school systems need to pick up the ball there, carry on. Determining teacher quality on this very narrow set of standards that NCTQ uses might be, it is seen as a very narrow set of criteria.
Did our state team or the national team come up with that list of recommendations?
So, they do that in partnership. We are side-by-side with the state team. The state and the national team work the visits together. They make the, you heard Dr. Ginsburg mention the conversation that takes place. That's a partnership as well. We are right there with them in partnership through the whole process.
Okay. Well, I noticed one of the things that NCTQ likes to focus on is pass rate of that test.
Yes.
And we have an institution that only has a 29% pass rate. Did we re-accredit them?
I'd have to go back and look at that institution and that particular prep program to know.
Because I know we can look at, like, you know, they said you might have a nice state average, but you have individual institutions where the students are not able to pass that test or they have to take it. I mean, when we accredit, are we looking at, like, how many times did a student from this institution have to take the test, like, three times or?
The creditors will look at all of those data as well. Bear in mind, professional accreditation is voluntary. State allows us to give licenses or not give licenses, so the coin of the realm is what the State Department and the Board does. Most universities tie into national accreditation as well. You know, I would tell you pass rates is a nuanced thing as well. First of all, there's not an iota of evidence anywhere that passing a test makes you a good teacher. Zero data, none. The test companies don't do predictive validity, and therefore, relying solely on that as a criterion can be problematic.
Well, I don't think anybody's seen that would be solely it, but what is the whole list of things? And we can, I can get this from you later, but I'm interested is what is it the accreditation team looks at? What measures do they look at? Like, NCTQ, like you said, looks at, well, you have this group of teachers come out, and then so many years later, here's how the kids scored on NAEP. And they think that says something about whether or not you produce quality teachers.
NCTQ does not look at any outcome measures, zero. NCTQ does not.
Oh, I thought you said they were looking at NAEP.
No, 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 no. They don't look at, all of their input variables are input variables.
Do we look at outcome measures?
We were required by our creditor to look at impact on student learning. We do have to report pass rates. We have to do, report pass rates by a series of demographic variables. We have to report pass rates by number of times that the students have to take the test, et cetera, et cetera. And those data, I believe, are on our dashboards that every university has to put up on its website.
And only one other question. In our tests that they have to take, are they broken out by core area of study or are they all together? Because I noticed in one of the comments was, we don't measure each area of study, like math, English, whatever.
But we do now. That's why I mentioned that difference in the test. It used to be combined, and they're broken out now by subject and content area.
Well, I know they had a real problem with how we taught reading, but hopefully, that's fixed now, too.
Yes.
One of the dilemmas that we have, and this is not a shot at NCTQ or accreditation, one of the dilemmas that we have is that many institutions will have, especially many of the privates that are smaller, well, they're very small numbers of people. So, if you report, they won't report a pass rate on, I think it has to be at least 10. Is that right? So, if you have three graduates, there's no pass rate reported. And that encompasses a lot of smaller institutions.
Well, I noticed they had, that we had quite a few institutions that didn't have at least 10 students of color either, so weren't able to look at that. But I'll get with Michelle later about those criteria they're looking at. I appreciate your work on this. It's helpful.
And again, look, ratings schemes have their place. I mean, we play the ratings games, but it's, you know, I'm going to put my money on something that is more robust and looks at a greater array of data and is much more nuanced in how they assess things. They don't just, you know, plug you with grades on things. Many of our institutions are reluctant to participate within NCTQ, and that's just honest.
Yeah, I think, you know, we get rated on a lot, by a lot of different groups, too, and there's two or three of them I wouldn't, you know, wouldn't walk across the street to read. But there's a kernel of truth in a lot of stuff, and we need to read it, I think, and say, well, you know, is this something we need to be paying attention to, like our reading program, and we did.
Right. I think that's fair, but I, and all I would say is that, is that there's no data that they would report that wouldn't be captured in the data that the state and the creditors is collecting as well.
Michelle.
Thank you, Chairman Horner. So, yeah, just looking at, looking at this, the National Council on Teacher Quality, it is a think tank out of DC. And some of the founders, you know, the Gates Foundation, Walton Foundation, Winthrop and Rockefeller, just to name a few. There's many, many more. And effective, when we look at the term effective, I'd say, how is this term, how is this defined? What data points must be present to pronounce that something is effective? And that's where I'm going with, agreeing with you on that is, if it's local and if it's, if it's a community-based thing or state thing or local thing, the think tank coming out of DC is not going to be probably what we, what I would, what I would agree with anyway. So, I would have to agree with many of your points you're making today. I'm just trying to figure out, I need to compare that CA, the other accreditation thing. I have to look into that a little bit more, but I agree with many of your points that you made today with this organization.
Thank you.
You know, when I was involved with them last spring, they were, a year ago, they were just, and they put out a report on this recently about the importance of passage rates on tests, kind of what the board member, who I was talking about earlier. And I kept trying to say, look, just be more nuanced in this, that there's the content tests, and there's something that the great experts talk about, which is known as content pedagogy, and the tests don't capture that. And so, for example, some of the best teaching in the world might come from people who aren't necessarily the greatest mathematicians. Indeed, the experts in cognitive science talk about what they call the expert blind spot. So, think about your kids in college that are with a Nobel laureate in math who can't teach a kid who's struggling because can't imagine what it's like to struggle, right? And so, that you need somebody that can somehow relate to that. I'm not saying that Nobel laureates can't relate to that. They probably wouldn't. And it's one of the problems that we have on things that I think are less nuanced, as you say, at a distance. You know, whether they just start coming out and doing some more things, you know, perhaps it would be more like accreditation. I don't know what the need for that would be. Again, what they do is they assign grades and they publish it. And, you know, it's like anything. It's like our rating systems for football or basketball, or our universities are all rated by US News and World Report. They're tied in with that kind of approach to things.
You're just giving us information to look into, for the public to look into this a little bit.
Yeah, well, and all I would suggest to you is that we're required by the creditor and required by the state to make available the information around the state standards and the creditor's standards. You can go to any of our websites. It has to be there. If it's not, they lose their accreditation. So, parents, students, they have options to take a look at this.
My biggest things were with anything, coming out of DC, ever, think tank coming out of DC. I don't want attitudes and beliefs necessarily to change. Kids, when kids walk into the school, I want them to have the tools to learn, to read, the write, the arithmetic, moving into the math concepts, all of that, but the basic foundations first so that they have the ability to discern between what's fiction, what's not fiction. And those are the things. I don't want attitudes and beliefs. And I feel like some of the things like NAEP and things like that, those scores don't, to me, do not mean anything because it's not, it's not basing, can you read? Can you?
Well, that's all NAEP does. NAEP has nothing to do with attitudes.
No, no, but I'm thinking, I'm just thinking as far as like the push, as far as like from these groups and that. What are they, I guess, what's their, what's their point or their purpose is what I'm trying to get at. It's like, what, they should be focused on, can the children, can the children read? And can they, can they write and do arithmetic and grammar? All of that's very important rather than going in and trying to get, change an attitude or a belief of a child more, it's more based on respect and manners. And that's, that's my point, what I'm trying to.
So, what Dr. Ginsburg is not telling you all is he has worked closely with this organization to help them understand the very things you're mentioning for a long time. And he's well-versed at working with them, trying to help them understand some of these things. And to the earlier point about there's a kernel of truth in data, that is true, but this is the same kind of data that we're already collecting for our accreditation system at the state level in partnership with the national organization, and that's what I love about Kansas. I have a great relationship in my office with the higher ed universities and with that organization, and it is a more personalized opportunity and not from someone coming from someplace else telling us how we should treat educators and educator prep programs.
Okay, thank you.
I think I heard you correctly, and I've heard this before, and I just need to confirm if I heard right. There is no correlation between passing the teacher preparation test and quality later on?
It's just the testing companies don't study that. So, it's what we call in the business predictive validity. Predictive validity is that a high score on this meets some outcome, and in this case, you would think good teaching performance. Now, it's intuitive to their defense. It's intuitive that having strong content would help make you a good teacher. I don't think anybody would challenge that. What I'm telling you is the tests don't capture that.
But it has not tested.
Yeah, it just don't test it, yeah.
And one other thing, going back to my question about who funds this, do the funder, to your knowledge, do the funders have an agenda?
You know, in fairness to NCTQ, I, some might, not all of them. I mean, they've had some broad, somebody pointed it out, they have had some broad-based funding, and they go back to a, you know, I always look at teachers as low-hanging fruit. I mean, they're easy to pick on in a business that's really, really complicated. It's also about 80-plus percent women. They're easy to pick on in our culture. I mean, so, all I suggest to you, so I'm not, this isn't being critical of NCTQ. I think they've had some broad-based funding. I don't know their funding sources now. I mean, they have a board that is more representative now than it was, I thought, at the outset. I mean, they have a board that is more representative now than it was, I thought, at the outset, but I find them, frankly, somewhat redundant and less robust, so why pay attention to it?
Okay. Anne?
Thank you. I think addressing the content thing's important. I know NCTQ, and I don't think we ought to blow them off because we don't like what they do. I think there's some things in there we ought to pay attention to, but they, I think, focus mostly on elementary. But at high school level, we don't let somebody start a teaching certificate unless they pass the praxis, right?
So I will give you just a brief anecdotal on this piece and the question about whether or not test performance relates to quality teaching. Weekly, superintendents, HR directors call me and say, "Michelle, we've got a candidate who can't pass X test, Y test. They're the best teacher we've ever had. They relate to kids. They're aware of situational things going on." So having that be a sole gatekeeper at the content level, you're correct, we require that content expertise, elementary level, the same is true. And I will tell you, I've got teachers in Kansas, we do right now, who have not passed the assessment, whose school districts continue to employ because they're the best teachers they've ever had, and because they've been well-prepared by our universities. There may be test anxieties. There may be things relative to just the whole testing environment that make it difficult for that candidate to pass.
But you do agree knowing content matters?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
And in fairness to NCTQ, they do do secondary analyses also. And so the most recent report focuses on aspects, and so they do do, you know, look, I've actually been doing research over the years on ranking systems. I found one a couple of years ago that ranked KU's football team 14th in the country. That's pretty phenomenal because we've only won about eight games in the last 10 years or 12 years. So I looked at, what was their data that they use? And they looked at the percentage of games that you won at home versus the percentage of games that you won on the road, and the score differential between winning at home and winning on the road. And so the algorithm mathematically was very, very sound. It just so happened that KU every year would play Lawrence High, or, you know, they play these cupcake schools, and we'd beat them at home, and on the road, we'd get skunked by everybody. We were ranked higher than Alabama and Clemson. We were ranked 14th. One of them was ranked, KU basketball in Kentucky, they did basketball and football. KU basketball and Kentucky basketball in this ranking were ranked over 100. Arguably, the two most successful, they are the two most successful basketball programs in the history of college basketball in over the last 10 or 20 years. My point about this, NCTQ, I mean, they're sincere in what they're doing, and we should honor that, as you say. It's a ranking system. You know, ranking systems are as good as the variables. Malcolm Gladwell wrote about a ranking system of law schools where they changed one variable. The variable was cost. So they added cost as a variable to their ranking system. Harvard and Princeton and Yale and Stanford dropped out of the rankings. Alabama, Marquette, all that, they jumped in. I'm not saying that cost is or isn't a good variable. It just gets at what these ranking systems are all about. They're very rigid. They set up what they, some criteria that they believe, and they go with that. No one's arguing against content. I mean, I agree, our accreditors agree, the state agrees, NCTQ agrees, that content's really important, obviously. All I'm suggesting to you is, I wouldn't rely on a rating or a ranking system. I'd rely on some kind of robust assessments to get at the things, Michelle, that you and others are talking about that we think is important.
I see no further questions. I thank you for this presentation. It was very interesting.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Lunch is served. Am I allowed to say that? No, I can't say.
And I need to point out that we have a closing time, and we have not gotten there yet. So I told Rick before we started that he was standing between adjournment and lunch.
It was something more like, "You've got 10 minutes, and get out."
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. There's an optional training for board members who want, after the lunch break, who wish to participate about Zoom, isn't it? So that's optional. Otherwise, we are adjourned.